Welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School Board of Education meeting. Today is October 13th and it's 5:10. We're going to start our agenda, our meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. Romeo if he will please lead us into the flag salute today.
Absolutely. Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with justice and liberty at all."
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Okay, so we have... I'd like to ask, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. I think that was called by Mrs. Marcus first. It's Mrs. Marcus. Dr. Breggy, report of... Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please?
Aye.
5-0, thank you. Report of closed session, Dr. Breggy.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hacker. Board has, the Board of Education has approved settlement agreement, OAH case 2020070667520, which passes, 0AH case 2020070402520 unanimously.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Okay, we're now going to move on to our public hearing period. And I will start off with the first public comment. And this comes to us from Concerned Beverly Hills Parents and Residents for Diversity. So, attached, please find a letter from Concerned Beverly Hills Parents and Residents in regards to ongoing problems that have been ignored by school officials for too long. "Since September 28th, when this letter was posted to the community, Governor Newsom recognized that the proposed ethnic studies curriculum passed by the state legislatures, excuse me, failed to reflect inclusivity." I'm so sorry, I'm not feeling well. "As a school district, we should be ahead of this issue, not behind it. It is unfortunate that many board members jump to support a program that requires careful consideration, care, and knowledge to develop. We, board members, particularly Mr. Margot, who is campaigning on the necessity of these studies to understand their complexity. Hopefully, the board will focus on getting our children get back into the classroom safely before launching politically charged personal agendas. Thank you for your immediate attention to these matters." There is a petition attached to this email, I should say, and that will be entered into the record. But I will read the first paragraph. "To the Beverly Hills Unified School Board and Superintendent Breggy, we are a growing number of parents concerned about the slow and steady transformation of the Beverly Hills School District. Our schools, once the envy of outside communities and the reason families flock to Beverly Hills, have lost their prestige, reputation, and purpose. Our school leaders have dismissed the concerns of parents on various critical matters for years, only to focus on their own agendas. Sadly, the voices that were once heard and respected and the sentiment of a strong community have been trounced by particular school leaders who prioritize their own personal beliefs above those who elected them. It is no wonder families are opting to move their children to other institutions and are willing to suffer economic hardship to do so. This is why our student count continues to dwindle year after year. This must stop. Our voices must be heard. It is time for the administration to address our concerns and take action." Do I have more time on the clock, Mrs. Starkens?
You have 23 seconds.
Okay, so, "The administration must develop an ethnic studies curriculum that addresses the injustices of all people, race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, and diverse ethnic and cultural background, and give equal importance and time in their discussion. Empathy, kindness, and respect are basic principles children should learn in a home environment." It is also critical... So, you know, I gave this one three minutes. Thank you, but I do want to say we have 21 letters to be read. So, if it's okay, I should have said that this is the beginning and I apologize. We're going to give two minutes to all of the other letters because there's too many letters and we want to get them all into the record and we want to read them out loud. So, we're going to just provide two minutes. If you can set your clock again, Mrs. Starkens. So, okay, so this will be entered into the record. There's a petition, as I said, I read a few paragraphs of what was submitted to us. The next letter... Just give me a few minutes, a few seconds here, please. Okay. I don't even... Just give me a quick second. Mrs. Marcus, do you want to go? I'm having trouble with...
I don't know where the letters. I don't have copies of the letters.
I sent you an email. Okay, no problem. I'm going to...
Wait, I see it now. I see it. Okay. Let me see what I can do. Hold on.
I can do this.
I see it now.
My screen is just frozen. I don't know. It's... Sorry, guys.
I can do it right now, Mrs. Packer. Comment, this one is on free speech with critical thinking. "We are heading down a very slippery path that we have not seen since the Red Scare in this country. Schools should be a bastion of critical thinking. While I'm very concerned about the continued antisemitism that exists in our country and the world, the petition being circulated goes far beyond that topic and the attempted censorship, I believe, would make Jews and other minorities less safe. Those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Brian Goldberg. This one is on ethnic studies and 1619 Project, "Parents for Equality Petition Comment." "To the members of the school board, Dr. Breggy and the city council, I hope this letter finds you well in the midst of such strife, uncertainty, and unsettled times. I was planning to write this letter before I received a, quote, 'petition of sorts' from a group somehow called Parents for Equality. Without a doubt, our district is in need of ethnic studies component to their education and additionally, I believe that the 1619 Project should be taught as source material to supplement the curriculum, as well as other source material that is addressed and continues to address other events and occurrences excluded from history. While Governor Newsom did not sign on to the current proposal for ethnic studies, he made it clear that he will do so in the immediate future. It goes without saying that it was necessary and right to address any sense of antisemitism, as well as any other racism or bias that existed in the proposed ethnic studies curriculum then. But attempts to push away the entire concept of the ethnic studies curriculum were made apparent by many in this community prior to this petition. There is never going to be any historic or social studies curriculum that satisfies all the people. The same is true with any law that exists in the city or state or country. Yet, it will be appropriate for the Beverly Hills Unified School District to adopt a version of ethnic studies as its own curriculum or be included within the context of other existing classes, such as English and Social Studies. The school board members who voiced any support for including in ethnic studies within the high school curriculum have their ears open and their hearts and minds in the right place. This country was built on racism and will fail to teach and to fail to teach that is failing our children. Teaching our children and young adults about the wrongs of the past, as well as the wrongs of the present, will be the only way to ensure the path to a more just and equitable future." Characterizing...
Mrs. Marcus, that's two minutes.
Okay, thank you. It still goes on and on. I'm going to call it quits. That was written, by the way, by Kelly Hinden. Comment, "I was raised in an education system in the deep south in the 50s and 60s. One argument I clearly remember is whether or not socialism or communism should be taught in school. It appears to most of the adults that the mere mention of these philosophies would forever taint our young minds. Not that we could and should be able to make our own decisions, or that an understanding of these systems might simply strengthen our resolve. In hindsight, their victory only signaled a feeling of ignorance. As I reread this statement, I was struck by the similarities and ignorance of the well-intentioned parents. They are so afraid of anything outside of their realm of understanding that it is easy to see how truth panels come into being. I am happy they are able to gather a list of concerned parents. I wonder how many take the time to have read the discussions with their children that leads to a fuller and better understanding of the intent of these classes. More so, I am interested in their involvement in the betterment of the system is only through missives such as this or in the real work of making it happen with their full involvement. Critical thinking is under attack throughout the country and this is how it is happening. I guess we will have to put our being nice and kind to each other ideas away for a while. This is the time to stand up against the onslaught of bullying we are facing. Truth and reasoning are necessary to fight the laws and disinformation being dressed up as concerned parents. And we certainly can, and we can certainly disagree agreeably, but it doesn't mean that we take this BS lying down." Written by Zale Richard Rubens. "Lessons of Inclusion at Horace Mann. Dear Board, I learned recently that a parent in our school was offended by a book our principal read to students last week about two male penguins who longed for an egg of their own to raise and then wonderfully get that opportunity. I wanted to just write to let you know how strongly my family supports not only our principal, but also the importance of books like this. After assembly, both my girls ran in to talk with me about the book. When I explained it was based on something that really happened, they were amazed and immediately wanted to look up in the news story to find out more. This, I would argue, is education at its best. Should we not be fostering empathy and building connections to people whose experiences are vastly different from our own? Are we not, as a public school, trying to build a community that accepts and celebrates differences rather than looking at them with suspicion or derision? This is how that happens. It was age-appropriate and very sweet. And I hope for one, would love to know that my district's school board agrees. Best wishes, Kelly Turner, mother to two at Horace Mann School." Did you want me to continue reading, Isabel?
I'm gonna read, you read...
I read 5 through 8.
Yes, I think that was... Mr. Spitz will read 9 to 12, but I'm gonna go ahead and just finish my portion. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, the next letter comes to us from Mrs. Shere Kehanchi. "Our kids are suffering mentally at home and they are not learning as much as before. I would like to know if our schools are planning and preparing to open soon." The next letter is from Jasmine Rastagar. Her comment to us is, "Please hire new teachers outside the teachers' union and open our schools. Please realize that even the WHO has realized that the cons of shutting down far outweighs the pros of flattening the curve, which we already have. Please reopen up. Please be sensible. Please stop helping rob our dearest children of their right to a proper education. Please save their mental health. Every parent I speak tells me that at least one of their children are suffering from anxiety. Justice service has to stop. Please listen to the parents, please. Please apply for that permit. Thank you for your attention to this serious problem." The next letter comes to us from Mr. Montaya. "Dear Board Members and Administrators, I am very disturbed to hear that from my children and other parents about an assembly at Horace Mann Wednesday morning. It is inappropriate to teach TK and kindergarten about sexuality during an assembly. This is very concerning with my kids have to ask me why two male penguins need to get an egg from another person to have a baby. In what world is that okay, to teach TK and kindergarten children? This is not something this school should be imposing on our children at such a young age. It's something that each family should decide on their own, when and how to speak to their children about. My family is going to be opting out of any and all assemblies in the foreseeable future. We are now even discussing leaving the district based on what we are seeing in the district and what we're hearing about it in middle school with antisemitism and teaching of the 1619 Project. It is truly sad to see how our district is going the wrong way with no parental consent or communication. This is why so many families are leaving our district. I'm really out of words about this and I hope I get a response." Okay, so... We are... Mr. Spitz, can you... I will lead the... Mr. Spitz, are you ready to read? I will read number nine and then I think this is, yes. Mrs. Marcus, did you read Kelly Turner's?
Yes, I read Kelly Turner. That was the one about the... Yeah.
Okay, so, I will read this one.
I read, you were just supposed to go with nine. I did five through eight.
Five through eight. Okay. "Dear BHUSD School Board Members and Dr. Breggy, we would like to take a moment to commend and acknowledge the Horace Mann Administration and staff on an insightful, age-appropriate, and important lesson during our weekly mini-morning assembly. Students were introduced to and Tango Makes Three by Justin Richardson and Peter Parnell. This is a touching and meaningful story about what it means to be a family. That love is what makes you a family. What a beautiful message to convey to students. Anyone who feels that this story or message is inappropriate or pushing an agenda clearly missed the message that was being addressed and portrayed. The story does not once mention the word gay or homosexual. Our district has been discussing messages and instruction in the fields of unity, inclusion, and social justice and changing the narrative. The story is a perfect example of how to do that appropriately. We fully support and commend the decision made by Craig Bugby and we believe the entire ILT team at Horace Mann to share this lesson. We are proud that our school is supportive of and creating an inclusive, accepting, kind learning environment and community at Horace Mann. Regards..." This is, this comes from us from Mrs. Serrano, Selena Serrano, a BHUSD parent and Horace Mann TK Instructional A Gabriel Serrano, a BHUSD parent. Okay, Mr. Spitz, can you read 10, 11, and 12?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hacker, and by the way, as far as two minutes are concerned, it usually takes me two minutes to recite my name, so I'll do the best I can. This first letter is from the District's Finance Committee. "The Beverly Hills Unified School District Finance Committee recommends the board policy regarding the Reserve Account Fund 17 should reflect the following increase. We believe the reserve fund balance should be maintained at approximately 25% of the annual budget. Current board policy states that the reserve balance stands at 20%. Since becoming a Basic Eight District, the district's revenues are not received evenly throughout the year and accordingly, the district has always needed to borrow using a tax revenue anticipation note during the fourth quarter of each year. This loan not only incurs interest expense, but also requires administrative time to manage the process. We recommend this increase could be accomplished over a three-year period if required. The committee approved this recommendation unanimously, submitted by Colleen Nurr, Chairman of the Finance Committee." Next. This letter is from Emily Fialho. "As a current Horace Mann parent and formerly BHHS graduate, I would like to express immense gratitude to our school's administration for their teachings of acceptance and inclusivity. Our Horace Mann teachers and staff have regularly been showing our students the value of diversity and personal differences. Through storytimes and community messages, they have promoted inclusivity and love. There was a particularly valuable share last week by our principal Craig Bucci-Bugby and I wanted to highlight how important the message was to our kids. Mr. Bugby read the book And Tango Makes Three, which has earned many awards and is a loving message about a penguin family, was a little different than many others. It was a simple story about acceptance and love without politics or controversial verbiage and we need more of this. I appreciate the initiative Mr. Bugby took to read this story to our students as many who feel different will feel they are seen with lessons such as this one. I wish I had more lessons like this when I was young." And then, last letter is from Jennifer Peterson. "Dear Board Members, I am writing to express my support and gratitude of the Horace Mann Administration for sharing an amazing and heartwarming story during our Wednesday morning assembly last week. The story And Tango Makes Three about two male penguins adopting an egg together was incredibly sweet and portrayed such an important message for our students. We are so lucky to have this inclusive and open dialogue at Horace Mann. It is incredibly special to have our children educated on the multitude of lifestyles that exist in our ever-evolving world. This no doubt enhances the already stellar education they are receiving at BHUSD. Your support of the voices in our community means so much to us. So, thank you as well for advocating what is important to us." Jennifer Peterson. That's it.
Mr. Margot, could you please lead us on to the next letter?
Sure can. "My name is Caio Max Azavedo and I am an eighth grade student at Beverly Vista Middle School. After listening to some parent concerns about the curriculum we are learning in my eighth grade history class, my parents asked me what my thoughts were on the 1619 Project. I'm so glad they asked because history is a subject that is dear to my heart and I truly hope that our community will listen to the opinions of our students. This, I believe. It is not a matter of deciding what factual information that students should or should not be exposed to, but more importantly, that students are receiving an education in Beverly Hills that allows them to critically assess information and provide an opinion. Now more than ever, we are living in a nation where every day our two-party system divides us further and further apart. The truth is that if we want to stop our country's division, we have to start with our youth. In sixth grade, I came across this quote by Alexandra K. Trendfor. 'The best teachers are those who show you where to look,'" I'm sorry, 'the best teachers are the...' Well, I think the quote is typed wrong, 'the best teachers are those who show you where to look, but don't tell you what to see.' This quote means a lot to me. It means that students should be taught to make their own choices, express their own ideas, and to own their own independent opinions. Although some parents want to force their opinions onto their kids, in order for us to grow, we have to learn to think for ourselves and to make choices based on our own opinions, not theirs. Yes, it's important we expose kids to what the choices are, but not to tell them which one is right and wrong. Parents should give their children a voice by asking them, 'What do you think of the subject being taught?' A teacher shouldn't be reprimanded for allowing students to critically think and to embrace ideologies that are different from their parents. My parents, although far from perfect, have given me the space I need to grow and develop my own ideas and opinions and for that, I couldn't be more thankful to them. I hope the Board of Education will hear its students and recognize the opportunities we have to shape our generation as critical thinkers and thoughtful leaders rather than followers of our parents' generation. Respectfully, Caio Azavedo, eighth grade student at BV Middle School." Number next one. "My name is Sophia Romanis. I grew up in Beverly Hills and went to Horace Mann and Beverly High. Both my boys are continuing in my family's footsteps and attending Horace Mann as first and fourth graders. I would like to take a minute to share why I am not only proud to be living in Beverly Hills, but proud and grateful to have my kids attend the Beverly Hills Unified School District, especially Horace Mann. As you are aware, tomorrow, October 14th, is National Stop Bullying Day. And also in October, Horace Mann celebrated all of its cultures via PTA-sponsored Multicultural Week held virtually. I know board members have participated in this week-long event. I'm also impressed that not only do the Horace Mann administrators support anti-bullying and diversity, but they take the time and energy to foster inclusivity while teaching beautiful historic events. During the Horace Mann mini-assembly last week, Principal Bugby read And Tango Makes Three, an award-winning children's book based on a true story of two penguins in New York City, in New York Central Park Zoo. The penguins are given an egg to hatch, which then creates a family. The penguins are what we consider to be, quote, 'in love.' What makes this story a little different than typical stories is that the penguins are male penguins, hence the media coverage when this happened in New York. It's a beautiful story. Most of the students probably just heard a cute little story about penguins and that's it. But this short book also teaches us that it's absolutely fine to live in a world where there are all types of people and families and it's okay to love whomever you would like to love. No labels were used, just an age-appropriate story with a beautiful message. We all know the statistics. Nine out of 10 LGBTQ youth reported to be bullied and harassed last year. Gay teens are 8.4 times more likely to report having attempted suicide and 5.9 times more likely to report high levels of depression compared with peers from families that reported no or low levels of family rejection. We in Beverly Hills do not want our kids experiencing this or want to raise kids that bully. At least if parents are bullies themselves or are afraid of and do not like people who are different, our students can have a safe place to learn and thrive. We also know that Beverly Hills is extreme..."
Interrupt, that's two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Next letter. "I have received from several sources a copy of the letter from BHUSD Parents for Equality regarding their concerns about ethnic studies in the district. I have had multiple conversations with fellow parents in the district and to put it plainly, we are baffled by the tone, tenor, and substance of the letter. Ethnic studies is sorely needed in our district if we want our children to grow up to be global citizens and principled leaders in their respective fields. We cannot wait for a government mandate that will not meaningfully manifest for nearly a decade. Although I agree that a truly comprehensive program shouldn't be rushed, I strongly commend Ms. Long for being proactive and creative with her curriculum. This is exactly the type of resourcefulness that should be celebrated as her lessons challenge our kids to ask difficult questions, think deeply, and develop the critical thinking skills that district parents maintain as a priority for their children. As for staying the course and teaching from approved textbooks, excuse my candor, but the publishing industry is exceptionally white, a fact which has rightly led to long overdue calls for structural change. Maintaining the status quo by blindly adhering to published textbooks is simply no longer an option. We are living in an era whose headlines are dominated by events that bear the wounds of centuries of little-told history and this fraught moment has given rise to some extraordinarily sharp and well-researched online resources. Turning to the best of these as a means of engaging with our past is a sign of nimble pedagogy, not indoctrination. Although neither of my children currently has Ms. Long as a teacher, I eagerly look forward to a time when they may and I could proudly state that I will welcome any and all questions that they may challenge me with from these lessons and endeavor to discuss the mighty complex issues that arise as thoughtfully as I know how. To me, this is the essence of true learning. Best, Faradonis." Good afternoon. My name is Cora Azavedo and I'm in fifth grade in Mr. Milliken's class. I would like to talk about the important story Tango Makes Three and that was shared with Horace Mann students at our mini-assembly last week. I was so flabbergasted when I heard that not all parents appreciated this book. This book really touched my heart and it made me smile. A boy in love with another boy isn't something to be embarrassed of. It should be something celebrated. I'm glad Mr. Bugby shared this with us because it helped the new generation know that we can be ourselves, whether we like boys or girls. Tango Makes Three shows kids that we can choose who we love because love is love. Parents shouldn't criticize a lesson about love. Mr. Bugby was right to share this story with us so that at a young age, we learn that there are different kinds of families and we should respect and appreciate love. I celebrate Mr. Bugby and these important learning moments for my generation to make this world a better place. Thank you for listening, Cora Azavedo, fifth grade." And my last one. "Dear Board Members, first of all, I can't believe that in 2020, I have to write a letter to the Beverly Hills Unified School Board to express my support for the Horace Mann Administration in their effort to present the important topics of equality and inclusion to our school community. The book And Tango Makes Three by Justin Richardson and Peter Parnell is a story about love and acceptance. I believe it's never too early to teach our children about love, acceptance, and inclusion. My kids are seven and five years old and we as parents have always made it one of our priorities to introduce them to the meaning of love and respect. That love is love no matter what. My wish and hope is that the Horace Mann Administration continues to make a point to educate our students and community about these important topics. Bravo, Horace Mann Administration and teachers. You have all of our support. Regards, Anna Mayorkas." You have all of our support. Regards, Anna Mayorkas. And I will turn it over to my colleague.
Hi there. This is from Gabriela Sorano from Mrs. Stratford's fifth grade class. Hello, I'm just here to address that the Tango Makes Three stories means a lot to me, and it should be meaningful to everyone else. I think it's an awesome story that addresses that the ideal type of family is not mom, dad, and daughter or son, but that families are made and run by love and feeling towards others. Like, an example would be my classmate Mason. He has two moms, but that can't change anything. Just because he has two of one thing doesn't change the fact that he and his moms are still human beings. I think families can be what they want as long as they're happy. People need to realize that just because someone has two dads or two moms doesn't mean they can't be addressed as a family or as an ideal-type family, because there is no such thing. Let people and families be them. Let them have fun. Let them live like any other family would. They, like any other family, deserve happiness and peace. They shouldn't have one hold the weight of hate on... Have to hold the weight of hate on their shoulders. They shouldn't be brought down just because of who they are. I think all families are acceptable and should be treated like any other family, because two of the same parents are any other family. They are a family as long as they are happy. They should be accepted as a family. My ideal type of family would be two happy parents of any gender and any color, any beliefs. As long as they are happy, they should be considered a family and taken seriously and not discriminated against who they are. That said, what stories like Tango Makes Three do, they teach us to accept. Thank you for your time. This next one is from Annette Goldstein. Dear School Board, this is my 27th year as a teacher in this district. In this time, many things have changed in the district and the world, not all for the better. I have worked for countless administrations over the years and find Mr. Craig Bugby to be the best of the best. Mr. Bugby is kind and generous. He is always striving for students to feel accepted, cared for, valued, capable, and most importantly, safe. I can imagine there would be a sing... I can't imagine there would be a single person who would not want this type of person in a position of leadership at their school or business. Our country is currently in pain. Many groups of people feel marginalized, devalued, or threatened. How wonderful it is to have a school environment where everyone is accepted no matter their ethnicity, gender, race, religion, sexual orientation, et cetera. I also want to commend the middle school and high school teachers for presenting the history of the past while also helping community created here... I'm sorry, while also helping children become critical thinkers for the present and future. Due to BHUSD and the supportive community created here, students are well-equipped to be kind and caring human beings as they navigate and contribute to this world. I am a Jewish woman who has unfortunately dealt with a lot of antisemitism in my life. I did not grow up in a community where the Jews were in any great number and was often made to feel less than other kids in my school community. I wonder how my school experience might have been different if I had a school administrator take the time to make sure my differences were accepted and celebrated by my community. I recognize my experience is pale in comparison to what many minorities face today, but a little support goes a long way. It is important to recognize anyone who is committed to being kind, caring, compassionate, and encouraging in the face of adversity, especially one who teaches others to do the same. Sincerely, Annette Goldstein, Horace Mann School. This next one is from Bahare Yaktfar. In these difficult times, many of us take a lot of things for granted. I wanted to bring attention to an event that happened recently at one of our Beverly Hills Unified School District community members, to one of our Beverly Hills Unified School District community members. Jewel Knighton, or more affectionately known as Juju to all the students and staff at Horace Mann and BVMS before the reconfiguration, needs our help. Juju started in our BHUSD family as a crossing guard many years ago. Her infectious smile and positive attitude caught the attention of the BV Administration. Mr. Bugby knew she would be a perfect addition to our team of stellar yard aides. After the reconfiguration, she continued to warm the hearts of everyone at Horace Mann. She also stayed after school each day until all the students are picked up. After they stay at home... After the stay-at-home order and online learning began, Juju has been a friendly face in the supplies pickup and helps make copies and put together supplies for our students. Over the weekend of October 3rd, Ms. Juju was in a terrible car accident. She was taken to Cedars-Sinai where she underwent surgery to repair her broken limbs and other injuries. Please join us in supporting Ms. Juju with her medical cost repairs and help her and her family find a place to live as they recently lost their living space and were in transition to a shelter. All money collected will be transferred to Ms. Juju by check or Venmo. Thank you for the support in helping one of our BHUSD shining stars in her recovery. We all hope to see her healthy and back at Horace Mann when we open for physical learning updated. As I write this letter, I received an update on Ms. Juju. Horace Mann was one of the first places that she called. She did not have her phone, so she had to... The nurse at Cedars-Sinai looked up the phone number for Horace Mann School. She's being released today to stay with a cousin in Palmdale for rehab. It will take a couple months, during which time she will have to relearn how to walk and to properly use her left hand. The admin team at Horace Mann spoke to her today, and her spirits are starting to lift, and all she talks about is how she can't wait to come back to work. If you would like to send a card to her, we have a box at the Hamill Drive door of Horace Mann School. You can also help her family financially by going to her GoFundMe page. The link will be on the Horace Mann PTA website. Every little bit counts. Thank you in advance to everyone for all you do for our Beverly Hills Unified School District. Thank you. This is the last one. Dear BHUSD School Board members and Superintendent Bregge, we are writing to you as a group of parents who disagree with the Parents for Equality. This group of parents masks themselves as Parents for Equality, but that, in their beliefs and practices shared in their petition, this is not what they stand for. We are not at all concerned about the slow and steady transformation of the Beverly Hills School District. Our schools continue to be prestigious, reputable, and on purpose. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We all want our kids back in school when it's safe. We want both our kids and teachers back safely, not quickly. We believe that empathy, kindness, and respect should be taught at home and reinforced at school. Sadly, some kids don't get these things at home, and they are lucky enough to encounter a teacher that is happy to lead by example. Schools should and need to be about moral compass. This board that these... This board that these Concerned Parents for Equality are talking about, how will it be put together? Will it reflect the diversity of the district by religion? Catholics, Jews, Muslims, atheists, Scientologists, political affiliation, Republican, Democrats, independents, race and ethnicity, white, black, Mexican, Persian, Asian, Hispanic? We support and believe in Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen stands for what's right and not for what's popular. Useless, unless any of these Parents for Equality is credentialed history teacher, they don't have the authority to propose a change in the curriculum. If Mr. Allen thinks it's fine, it's good enough for us. We do not want parents dictating what our children learn and do not learn. Pre-pandemic, parents were not allowed to sit in on class without prior authorization, let alone walk the campus. Now, parents are able to sit in on a class and observe what is being taught and how their children are reacting to the lessons, for good or bad. Although this is not what they will learn, something new like empathy, kindness, and respect, to name a few. We do not believe that resolution based on the Parents for Equality petition asks for should be put in the board for the 13th of October. This is much too quick to try to address these deep issues that are affecting our district as a whole. If the Board does decide to bring forth an agenda item based on this petition, it would be mirroring the current political events, like forcing a Supreme Court justice in before an election. Okay, that was last.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Walker Schuman. I have to ask a question. There's another letter that was submitted at 2:35, so I'm gonna go back and read it, but I wanted to make sure it was in caption in the record of what Mr. Margot read. It's from... It's the one, it comes to us from Mrs. Jill Eggerman. You did not read that, correct? Okay, so I'm gonna read that one, and that'll conclude public comment.
And I just want to say that the last letter was from Parents for Diversity.
Thank you. Okay.
I tried to interrupt. Pam, can you confirm? I thought we had a no on that being read when it was submitted.
I have it here for public comment.
Okay, because on our website, it came in as a do not read.
Okay, so then I'm going to ignore it because I have it for a public comment. It was sent to the Board. I can see that the Board said that, I mean, sees that, but if you're on your side, it says do not read, I will... I will be prudent and not read it.
And I'll send it out.
And it could be recorded into the record. Okay. So, if we got that wrong, I apologize, but we have two different signals here. Okay, so that concludes our public comment. There was another letter by a parent who's already submitted a letter, and so, everyone gets to submit a public comment, I believe, once. I'm gonna ask Mr. Margot, because Mrs. Crasher and I were going back and forth, and what is the practice? I think the practice is just one letter per person, correct?
Well, you know, they changed the rules because of the pandemic, so I don't want to opine completely, but it seems to be that they are allowing just anybody who sends a letter in, people should get their due diligence, but I don't think we should get two letters from one of the same people. But if somebody signed another person's letter also, that would be okay.
No, yeah, so that's... So, the first option applies here. Okay, so what we're gonna do at this point is we're going to continue with our meeting, and we have spotlight now, Dr. Bregge.
Thank you. We started to honor and recognize many of our teachers that are doing such a great job in the classroom on and off of pandemic times. And so, we're excited to bring you another teacher spotlight, and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kabert from Hawthorne Elementary to introduce our special guest.
Muted, sorry. Thank you so much for having me. It's my pleasure to introduce Annie Cohn, who's a third-grade teacher. This is her seventh year in BHSD. And Miss Starkins, she's gonna need to screen share, so if she doesn't have permission.
I believe that permission was granted at the beginning. Do you have it?
Yeah, I see it. I can do it. Yeah, it works. Um, hi, thank you for having me. I'm Annie Cohn. As Ms. Kabert said, I teach third grade at Hawthorne. I was at El Rodeo before, and I actually graduated from El Rodeo and Beverly, so happy to be back. And I just wanted to share a little bit about what's happening in our Zoom classroom this year. So, you know, when it first... When we first found out we'd be online, it was very concerning to think about meeting new kids and never meeting them in real life. And so, I really thought, how can I still build community? And how can I still... Like, how can we engage in rigorous learning through a computer screen? And I have to tell you, it's working really well. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about how we start our day, and I think how that sets the tone for the learning that we do in our classrooms. So, I start my day, whether in the physical classroom or on Zoom, we always start with a morning meeting, and I feel like that's a really good way to help the kids connect with each other, connect with me, and just feel really valued every day. So, we start with a greeting, and I have the students teach different languages, so that way we get to greet each other in different languages that they teach us. So, I think it's pretty cool for them to maybe hear their fellow classmates greet them in a language that they maybe only hear at home. So, we've been learning Hebrew and Spanish and Farsi and many different languages. We'll continue that for as long as they keep teaching us languages. And then, we do our Hawthorne Hero mantra, and then we have a question of the day where we get to learn everybody's favorite subject or a time you were brave, or your favorite color, or just something where we get to connect. Every student gets a chance to speak. Every student gets a chance to be heard, and it makes them feel really valued, and it really helps us get to know each other. They... Many of them might not have met in real life, but they still have these rich connections that they're forming. And then, my other concern beyond community building was also rigor and learning and deep critical thinking. And so, I've been doing daily math talks, which I really feel not only help with the critical thinking, but actually help with the community building. They're talking about numbers, they're seeing each other's perspectives. So, number talks really help students think flexibly about numbers, which really helps them develop their number sense. So, I was just gonna share a few of those that we're doing in our classroom. Let me just do this. So, for example, they might be faced with a problem like this. They have a little bit of time on their own to reason with the problem. A lot of the time, then they go to a breakout room. They can share their reasoning with a partner. So, they're engaging in collaborative conversations first thing in the morning, building off of each other's ideas. And then, we come back, and they get to share out. And not only do they get a chance to share, to reason, you know, to model their thinking, but I get a chance to see what they know. And so, then this informs my later teaching. I can see, do they know that six and four make a 10? Or is that something we need to focus on? Um, we can also do problems like this where we may not have formally learned multiplication yet, but they've discovered it on their own. They've discovered repeated addition or drawing equal groups. They're able to learn concepts through inquiry, through discovery. And then, there are some problems like this that might have, you know, their low-floor, high-ceiling problems. So, a student that might not feel strong in math yet can make 24 by adding 12 and 12. But a student who really wants to take on a challenge can do more complex math with multiplication and division. And so, this gives every student, they're really differentiated, and every student gets a chance to share and to learn. And really, let me stop this. Um, you know, it helps them, they're engaging in the standards of mathematical practice first thing in the morning, and they literally beg me not to go to recess so they can tell me more of their answers, which I take as a big win. So, that's what we've been doing. The last thing I just want to share is just a student who made a video about her... I mean, so what we might do later in the day when they're doing mental math, then they can make a flip-grid video and sort of share what they learned that day. They can watch each other's to learn more. Let me just... So, here they were given, like, they could choose kind of a leveled math problem, and I'll just show, it's like 30 seconds long, but just so you can see what they're doing.
I'm gonna show you how to decompose a math problem using mental math. So, my math problem is 72 plus 18. So, what I did in my head when I saw this problem was I first took the 2 and the 8, and I add those together to get a 10. Then I took the... So, I put that 10 here, and I added this 10 from the 18, which I hadn't used yet. I added those together, and I got a 20. Then I added 20 to the 70 from 72, and that equals 90. So, 72 plus 18 equals 90.
So, anyway, I think if kids can talk about their learning and learn from each other and understand that numbers are flexible and develop their reasoning, then I think that's all we can ask. So, thank you for having me. I'm happy to share and to be here. I'll let you guys continue on, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cowan, for being here.
Thank you so much.
That was a wonderful presentation. I really enjoyed it. Anybody else on the Board? That's up. Thank you so much.
Thanks, bye.
Kids are very lucky.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Can I pull a couple items?
Yes, Mr. Margot, please do.
I'd like to pull 9D and 9H.
9D, isn't David?
Yes.
So, I'll rephrase my motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 9D and 9H.
I'll second that.
Read that, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0. Okay. Discussion, 9D, Mr. Margot.
I'll make a motion to approve AirTutors LLC service agreement for the 2021 school year.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, I have a...
Discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
So, so I had asked, and I just wanted to answer clarified to the community. That, Michael, what process are we using to identify the students that are eligible for for Air Tutors? Or Dustin?
Yeah, Mr. Seaman was taking care of that area.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Margot, for the question. The way that we identify students to be able to receive some of the services from Air Tutors is qualification for Title III or our English learner students. What we found was we needed additional support in multiple different languages to help not only the parent understand the educational system. But also assist the student with additional support past what happens in our brick and mortar or virtual with our student or with our current parents. So one, they have to qualify for Title III services. In addition, we are looking at test scores and grades overall. So there is a vetting process to be able to provide these services for the students.
I think I asked a question about that also, the number. I think we have about thirty-five students, as I recalled, that would qualify at this time.
Correct. We've identified thirty-five students at this time that speak a variety of different languages. Both at home and are their first language. And so Air Tutors is going to be able to provide us. With tutors in a wide variety of different languages to support those students.
Do we have a limit to the number of students that we can include in that or is that can be any number then?
That could be any number. As we start to identify students or if new students to the district or even older students. We can definitely add those to the list.
Thank you.
Further questions? Any further questions from the board? Okay, we're ready to call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Aye, it's five zero. Thank you. Next item.
Yeah, I'll make I'll make a motion.
Item nine H, renewal for Ares Communications.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Okay, so my question on this, and we get to this every time Ares comes around, is is this the best platform? Still for what we need at this moment? And if so, why? Because we hear from a lot of people, I hear people in other districts, you know, somewhat, sometimes parent complaints. This Ares, I can't use it, it's a crack, whatever. Anyway, I just, I so I want to have the conversation in public. And I see David has joined us. Thank you, David, that why Ares? So we can put this issue to rest at least for the next year until it comes around again.
It's a good one, and I think it's important to ask that question about, you know, anything that we committed to. And Ares has sort of been with us a long time. We've had it for around twenty years. It's a legacy system. And and what I would kind of start with is. You know, Ares is sort of the backbone of everything that's related to our students. And so it it touches literally everything we do. So, so over the years, there've been a number of other competitors that have come into the field. And and some of our administrators have used Ares, some have used some of the other, you know, really good products out there. That are are competitors of Ares. And, you know, this question has gone around internally. But but the, you know, the direct answer to your question is that, you know, Ares is is. We've put a lot of time, we've put a lot of training, we've put a lot of of. We put a lot of of our own sort of stamp on what Ares does for our system. And it touches online registration, it touches parent communication, it touches grades, it touches attendance. It touches all the reporting we do for CalPads, it touches what we do for special education. And in terms of updating SACE with information about what student services, the services students receive. So it's 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 extremely complex and and it's, we have deep deep expertise around the product. So we've worked very honestly with Ares about questions and issues that people have. Because because it's not the most flexible system and it's 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 because it's a database and it's it's built on an architecture. That's less modern than some of the other database architectures. And Ares has really been a good partner with us in terms of, you know, listening to our concerns. And and really working on solutions that that are important to us. They haven't addressed all of them, but they but they have addressed a good number of them. So, and and I just want to clarify for the board and for the public that we've already approved Ares. The Student Information System, Online Registration Analytics. And I'm leaving out that left something out. There's one other piece, the gradebook. All those pieces have already been been approved for the twenty twenty-one school year. This is just for the Ares communication piece. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Margot, or do I need to?
It does. It does, David, but the the thing that I keep, even I'm hearing you say it, is that there's other systems out there that are built on a more modern platform. So I understand that as far as a juggernaut in a in an entire district system. Where I think it feels like we're kind of stuck with Ares at this point. If there's just too many interwoven pieces for us to shift to a different platform at this point. If we were building from new, maybe that would be then a consideration I'm I'm hearing. But because everything is already integrated and running and this carousel is going, we can't, you know, we can't change the horses on the carousel right now. It's moving. So that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, you're right. It would be very difficult. It would be very time consuming. I I did live through this in another in another organization. And it and it took more than two years of planning just to.
Yeah.
Just to put the pieces together to make the migration. And in that organization, we didn't, we didn't elect to make the change. We 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 had to make the change. They were using something that was that was that the that the company was no longer gonna support.
Okay, I I do appreciate the explanation and putting this out there. I I completely understand. And so through its minor faults that we encounter in in the, I guess, the rigidity of the system, it's still the best option for our district.
It is. And I will tell you, I think you'll be happy that this particular item. Parent Square is now the engine behind Ares Communications. And that I've heard you mention this on more than one occasion, that you would really like to have a document routing. And electronic signature capabilities within within our parent communication portal. And that's that's one of the features that's coming in with this new Ares communication. So you're gonna love that. Our our community is gonna love that.
So so when we can finally go on field trips again, we can do permission slips and stuff?
Exactly.
Great, great timing. Fabulous.
Always, you know, we got a little bit of time here, right? We're starting to roll out and by the time we get back to that sort of thing, we'll have it. People will know how to do it.
Anyway, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I have a quick question.
Oh, okay, so. Mrs. Walker has a question and then you go.
Just a really quick question. It's actually a little less about the contract than it is about the rest of the topic. Does this mean that we're not going to really be pushing forward with looking at any other learning management system? Or that we're just gonna hold steady right now with Ares and take our time to examine an alternative for the future?
So, just to clarify, so Ares is the Student Information System piece. And and it, I think you're asking the question because we went from a learning management system to Google Classroom. And Ares Gradebook. And we haven't had any recent discussions about making a change. To that part of what we did last year when we moved away from Schoology.
Okay.
But things been discussed since since last year about that.
But just to be clear for all our parents watching, Ares where we have no matter what learning management system, because that hit hooked into the state of California, right?
Correct. And it's and it's the system of record for everything their child has done since they've been in school.
Got it. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you, Mrs.
I was gonna mention what Mr. Demico just said about the fact that no system is gonna be perfect. And, you know, I was gonna mention the problem that we had by switching with the learning management system and how much aggravation we had with it and so on. And and if if Ares isn't really broken, as far as I can see right now, I don't see any reason to change. However, it's always wise to look into other systems, but we have to be very cautious about making a change for change's sake. So I just wanted to make that, that would be my thinking.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote on this topic, on this item? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero. The the item passes. And now we're going to move on to reports. We have the superintendent's report first, item ten A, and then that'll be followed by the student board member report, Mr. Kashanian. And then after that, we will have an ASB report.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Starkens is going to pull this up on her screen. I'm having a little difficulty with changed computers. Great, thank you very much for doing that. If you can go to the next slide. So we published our plan. It's been a couple of weeks. And I do want you to know, this is a community-wide document. There were some perceptions at first. Because we used a plan that built off of our previous knowledge as a lot of the changes and revisions happened. So I know that there were some initial messages of that we've seen this before. And I want to assure you that if you have looked through the plan, and I know many of you have, and thank you for that. It is very detailed compared to what we've shared before. So please do not think that by using a couple of pictures or looking through quickly, that this is just information we're sharing over and over. There's a lot of detail that's in this plan that has never been shared before. Eighty percent of this is new. There's there's new detail, there's new process in there, there's product sharing. And so, you know, please know that that is something that will still continue to change, but it is a lot different than what we've done before. We're going to continue to update this document as things change and evolve as this is happening every day. I do need everybody's help in this particular area. Because it takes everybody to look at the systems that we've put into place. And the best thing that I can think of is that when you are, when we're in a school site, we we often get really comfortable. And so one of the security protocols has always been to have your ID badge. And so we became really comfortable, it was culture that we built, that if we didn't see that ID badge that said BHUSD. We would ask somebody, you know, do you have your ID if we didn't recognize them? That's the kind of help that we're going to need through this system as we are putting new processes into place. It isn't about, you know, pointing out what's right, what isn't right. It's really everybody owning this process. And if something isn't going right, that needs to be shared. And if there's a better way to do something, we certainly want to know about it. So it just is really gonna take everybody as we continue to implement our plans to share. And, you know, kind of come together on this plan so that we can continue to improve it. And the accountability piece is is really holding all of us accountable for every piece of it. There isn't any piece of this that can't be improved. And so we look forward to sharing those ideas over and over. Next slide. So just as an example, so we've really, this plan is so unique to our district. We are not just taking other plans. The the county has actually asked for a copy of our plan. So that they could use this as an exemplar for other school districts. And this is just an example of of how we're looking at our workspace, our indoor space, our outdoor space. Because it's really gonna take the creativity of being able to use the entire footprint of our school district and our site. In order to ensure that we have the safest environment. So we've really looked at this from a perspective of trying to utilize all of the space, even in areas that somebody might not think. That that could be a site that would work or a space that would work. We're doing everything that we can to ensure that that space is available. And it may be outside of what somebody would consider to be typical or traditional. But we're getting really creative about how we can use our space. This is a slide I showed you before. This is important for people to know if you have questions along the way. Anybody on this team, this COVID nineteen compliance team, is able to share information, answer questions. We meet on a regular basis. In fact, we're meeting again tomorrow so that we can talk about where we are in the process. Our protocols and some of the new things that are being handed down from the county. And so this is also a group that is in charge of student records and HIPAA information. As we are also working very closely with the county and also the state. So just a quick update in some of the information that wasn't shared before. I just want to share with you just some of the information that that really is popping out at us. As far as as we begin to make plans for when we're able to bring students back into the classroom as a whole. You know, if there is a site, there's questions we get asked all the time is if there is a positive case inside a classroom. And the way that the state looks at that right now is that if there is a confirmed case, that classroom will go home. Now, of course, this is, we're looking at an elementary classroom or if there's a self-contained classroom. So obviously, switching to distance learning, if we've learned anything, we have learned to do this quite well. And so if there is going to be a situation where distance learning is going to be required. I feel like we've done a lot of upfront work and that we've done a lot of preparation and we know how to use our technology in a new way. So switching, although not ideal, is something that would be a lot different this year than it would be last March or April. So switching to distance learning, if if there are twenty-five percent of the schools in the district that are closed within a fourteen day period. So if you're looking at a school that closes, and that could be three or more cases. Obviously, the county comes in to look to see where were the students, what kind of contact tracing was involved. And if that were the case, if there was a school that closed down in our school district, the way that the state is looking at it now. Is that if there's twenty-five percent of your schools that are closed, the district would close. And so we're right at that number with having four schools technically, that according to the way that it's written now, that it could be a district closure. If we do have a school that closes down. And again, we share this information with you because these are the types of things that weigh very heavy on our minds when we are developing our processes. Our processes and everything from the symptom checks to how we handle if a case was discovered during the middle of the day or after school. Athletics, music performance. So all of these considerations are taken into place. So the waiver for TK through two, and this is something that I'm asked about on a somewhat regular basis. Is that we had waivers for a while, then they took them away, and now they've come back. And so the way that the waivers are going to be awarded is by the number of low-income students that you have. And so in LA County, they are looking at awarding these applications, which are turned into the county. They have to go through a processing, which could be several weeks. And then they will start to grant waivers for schools that are going to open TK through two. And so we are a school district that does not have a large percentage of low-income students. So in this process, if they have said that they're going to start releasing maybe thirty schools at a time. We are not in a place with our low-income students to be one of the first that is awarded. As you can see, I have on this slide that our Hawthorne TK through two low-income data. We're at about two point four percent, two point five, and then also Horace Mann is at about six point three seven. And so there are schools throughout LA County that have, you know, eighty, ninety percent of of low-income learners. So this is still something that we're looking at, we're still considering. We're not sure if the county will be releasing schools at perhaps the same time. Some of these, the TK waivers are also announced, some of those schools that are going back. But we're also keeping tabs of the the overall data in the county as well. And this waiver does take some collaboration and does take some unique. Agreements with with parent groups and with also with our union groups. And so this is available to us. This is something that we're discussing to see if this would be a good fit for our district. But again, this is something that is not a sure thing. As they will start to award these waivers with school districts and schools with the highest level of in. Low-income learners. So just today, as I've reported to you several times, that on Tuesdays, our tier measurements are provided to us. There there was an uptick in our reporting of COVID nineteen cases, not by much, but by a little bit. So that keeps us in our purple tier. in our reporting of COVID-19 cases, not by much, but by a little bit. So that keeps us in our purple tier for now. Again, something that we look at all the time and we are basing a lot of our planning around possible releases from the county. So as I mentioned before, we're getting better at how we're handling the operational end of preparing for COVID-19 preparedness. So this is just an example, is we reported many weeks ago to you that we had drinking fountains. And if you remember, we had the tape going over it, you know, don't drink, don't take from here. And now we are starting to get new products that are available in an inexpensive way to satisfy the same outcome. And that is to ensure that we're not drinking from our drinking fountains at this time. And so that's just an example of how things are being updated and changed and improved every single day. Our signage for our schools arrived today. And so those new signs and information decals and, you know, other informative illustrations will be going up all over the school and you will see them staff for sure when you start going back into our schools. And I think that you will be very proud to see that we were looking for every possible area where we can provide instruction, directions, expectations for our students. Currently at this time, this was just happening today, additional hand sanitizer. Stations are going up all over the place. Every day I see more and more of those. And and most importantly, as I was talking about before, when I was talking about that we need everyone's help in in our plan, that the feedback that we're getting from our teachers and our staff that are coming to school is just, it's so helpful, you know, and some teachers have asked for some additional items to ensure their safety when they come back. And it's everything from hair caps to shoe coverings, longer gowns, different types of shields. And so we are all over that and they've already been ordered. And those are things that we can do and we're very happy to do to ensure that our staff feels safe in our schools. This is just a slide showing some of the the signage that has come in today. This is at the district office. And we're also putting hard copies of our protocols at each school so that anybody that's coming in, if it is a staff member, we want people to be able to see what we're doing. This is also for the public health officials as well, who we know will be coming in. They can come in at any time. I've extended the invitation to our public health officials to come anytime because the feedback that they can give us is just as valuable as if when staff is coming through and walking through our schools and providing suggestions, feedback, or even concerns. That's really important for us to make decisions for improvement in the schools. And you've heard tonight a lot about curriculum. You've heard a lot of public comment about some of the things happening in our schools and you've heard a lot about people that are very happy about something. You've also heard people talking about concerns that they've had. And so tonight, I just wanted to end my report with something that is is true and dear to my heart as a teacher, as a principal, and as your superintendent. And I want to recognize our parents, our students, our teachers, but also our curriculum that we have in place. You know, we're living in this time of high anxiety. There's a lot of finger pointing and there's a lot of blame. We have a high-quality district and we continue to be highly desired throughout the state and in the country. We continue to involve, to evolve as a school district and as a community. We're not perfect, but we are listening. It's very important for us to understand the specific concerns from our parents. We're a very intelligent community. And as it was pointed out earlier in one of the public comments, we know that that the parents are hearing about what students are learning. And I view that as a very good thing because parents should know what's happening in our classrooms. And let's be honest, parents and students learn early on that there are different teachers that have different learning styles and teaching styles. And thank goodness for this because for this variety, as students have very different preferences and learning styles in the classroom for learning. We are asking our students to think differently. And we're asking our teachers to create meaningful contexts in their lesson planning. And we're also asking our students to complete complex tasks. And the textbook does not drive the curriculum, nor should it. Parents often have legitimate concerns and there is a process in place to share those concerns. And I've heard the demand for the administration to develop an ethnic studies curriculum. And, you know, that is important. And the administration and the board absolutely agrees. And last meeting on September 22nd, the board opposed the current form of AB331 in order to have a more inclusive representation in the curriculum. And we would like to develop a plan that will address the ethnic studies curriculum. But I disagree with the petition in that it shouldn't be an administrator task. It should be a community effort and not a task for administrator. Fortunately, we have some time on our hands and we want to do this right and respectfully. Over a month ago, the board passed a brand-new strategic plan and the objective was fostering a learning environment of high academic standards and collaborative relationships that value diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's right there in our strategic plan. We know, we understand, and welcome the opportunity to improve in these areas. Our students are noticing their curriculum, as you heard earlier in public comment, and the resources that we're using too. I had the most refreshing conversation with a Beverly Hills High School student last Friday. And that just reminded me the importance of hearing our students' voices as well. Teachers are given broad discretion on carrying out the curriculum. State standards are clear, but no organization is able to describe everything that will be taught in the classroom. Our board policy gives teachers the flexibility to provide instruction that supplements the standards. And the staff also has the flexibility to determine the best instructional methods to use in preparing students to meet these standards. We also have a policy that states that students should have the opportunities to discuss controversial issues which have political, social, economic significance. And the students aren't mature enough in many cases to investigate and to address. And our teachers know which students those are. The study of a controversial issue should help our students learn how to gather and organize pertinent facts, discriminate between the facts and the fiction, draw intelligent conclusions, and respect the opinions of others. This is just in some of our policies. However, the policy also expects the teachers to exercise and caution when selecting particular areas of study. We also expect impartiality and appropriate factual information. And without promoting any partisan point of view, the teacher should help our students separate fact from opinion and warn them against drawing conclusions from insufficient data. All of this coming right from the policies that we have. The teacher shall not suppress any student's view on the issue as long as its expression is not malicious or abusive towards others. And our teachers are provided a balance between the professional responsibility and academic freedom. When a concern is raised, the best place to start is with the teacher. If a parent or student is not satisfied with the outcome, the school site administration should step in, review the concern together, and look for a reasonable solution. Differing points of view should strengthen the most appropriate and reasonable solution. In most cases, this is a successful experience and it happens all the time in our schools at every grade level. I just want to end with that I do not believe that we have our priorities in the right place if we are going to single out our teachers. Our teachers are leaders in our school district. They teach with enthusiasm and with passion. And if presented the right way, our teachers and administrators are willing to move to positive solutions in the face of difficult and seemingly insurmountable challenges. As the superintendent, I can assure you that we can and we will have these tough conversations as a school community and a greater community of Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that we have our student board member report now.
Good, good, good evening, everyone. We are currently in the middle of week nine. And live at BHUSD has only been getting better. Students are getting better at time management and teachers are much more adept at teaching virtually. Many students have been stressing their support for our ASV planned events such as our first-ever Chef N'it Up event, where we invited Chef Lees and some of his students to give a live instruction on how to make pumpkin pumpkin chocolate chip cookies. We had about 40 attendants and none of the students went home unsatisfied. Since students are bored at home, we only plan on increasing the number of events that we that we plan so that students will be will be as happy as possible during these times. Other than this, we must all simply persevere and continue putting one foot in front of the other until we can start going back to school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krasnyan. Now we have an ASV presentation from Mr. Michael Newman. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Tell us a little bit about why you're here and what you're presenting before we start presenting. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Newman. I'm senior class president of ASV this year and this is my fourth year being class president in ASV. I'm mainly here today just to speak about, you know, the the way we've been going this year, which has been vast improvement as we've seen from last semester, from last last quarter when we were first online in March. And that was, you know, a last-minute thing. And and from from last year to this year, we've seen a big improvement in how the rigor has improved and students are more adjusted, teachers are more adjusted. And of course, it's never going to be perfect, but that's what we're going to strive for. And I'm here just to give some feedback that I collected from two separate surveys, one from students and one from parents. And just address some minor issues that I think are still really important. So I'm going to go ahead and share a presentation that I made addressing the two surveys and hopefully coming up with viable solutions. So in ASB, actually, so about two months ago, when school started in August, we saw how things were going in the beginning and we realized that it's going to get better and it has gotten much better, thankfully. And there's still some things we can improve on. So that's why I created the Optimizing Academic Schedule Committee in ASV. We have a group of about five students, including myself, who have been meeting with admin and coming up with ideas for surveys and what to ask students and parents. And, you know, all the little details are involved in the logistics. So as I said before, some background is when schools closed in March, we kind of lost our rigor. We kind of lost our pace understandably. It was a very last-minute thing. But finally, this year, with the way that admin and the board worked together to create the new schedule, we've seen that the rigor is amazing. We, I think, you know, most students who who enjoy the education are seeing that they're really being challenged and that's a really big plus. So online instruction has vastly been improved. There's some issues that need to be addressed. And I just took a quote from one of the surveys that we took. So BHUSD Live has not been a failure in any way. It has innovated and provided a needed and new way of attending school. For that, I'm thankful for all that work coming into it. So what can we do to optimize? So there's two things. So two things we need to address, first being the lack of student-teacher contact. I think from when school started to now, I would say that it has, you know, improved a little bit. You know, thankfully, Mr. Mead and admin has really been responsive to the needs of the student body and they've, you know, suggested that teachers can do maybe Friday mornings, they can offer office hours so they can meet one-on-one with their students. And I think that's helped a little bit. I think we could still do a little more to improve that. And the second being excess screen time, you know, obviously, since we're all on school virtually, there is no way to avoid being on a screen. That's a given. But I think there are ways that we could address the excess screen time where we can kind of replace unneeded screen time. And for example, instead of looking at the screen the entire hour and a half of class, we can maybe have like a time where you just take some problems and work on it on paper and then return back to class. And this is just a quote from one of the students, "My eyes generally hurt and I need a break." So I mean, I'm sure the same goes for teachers, students, administrators, everyone who's on the computer. It's it's kind of, it's expected that we're going to have these issues, but we're going to work to solve it. So to be just more clear for the surveys, 260 students responded to these surveys and 1,000 parents were emailed. Thankfully, Ms. Raymer, PTSA president, helped me a lot with this and she sent it out to all the parents and 76 parents responded to give some feedback. So starting with the student results, this is just a grade breakdown of the students that responded. You can see here 260 responses. So freshmen are blue, sophomores red, juniors yellow, and seniors are green. So a nice breakdown, pretty even, I would say. And then for, so we asked the students, "How many hours are you on the computer each day, including live class and after school?" We can see here that almost about 50% of students are on the computer for 10-plus hours a day. It's kind of, it's just, it's not really avoidable fully, but I think we can work a lot to diminish, you know, decrease these numbers because it could be a little bit concerning if our eyes are looking at a screen for 10-plus hours every day. It really does add up and it could have long-lasting implications on our health. And then continuing, we asked students, "Have you experienced any of these symptoms since school last, since school has begun?" And it's important to note that the last option was, "No, I haven't" experienced any of these symptoms, which you can see here is six people. But to to look at the top, 84% of students reported eye strain, 79% of students reported back pain, 82% reported headaches, and 53% reported blurred vision. You can see dry eyes, neck and shoulder pain, overstimulation from the screen. And some students decided to report, you know, type in their own responses. The next one, the next question was, "I feel as though the current academic schedule makes time for outside-of-class student-teacher contact." So one represents that students are not feeling that it's giving enough time for them to have conversations with their teachers. So as we see here, about roughly 70% of students either agree or somewhat agree that, you know, they they aren't getting the time they need with the teachers. And understandably, teachers have a lot they have to do. It's very different this year for them. They have a lot more responsibilities. They have a lot of meetings and you know, tech meetings that they need to go to. So it's very understandable that this is the situation. We just need to figure out how we can best optimize for teachers to still get their same education on the on tech issues and just, you know, prepping for classes, but also meeting the needs of the students when they need help with the curriculum. So when we asked students, "How is your experience with BHUSD Live so far?", some, I had to summarize the responses because there were obviously many. But, you know, some said much better than last year. Many reported excess excessive screen time and many students talked about how it was mentally and physically exhausting. There's many more results. Feel free, if you can just click the link on your own leisure and you can look through all the results. It's public information. So moving on to the parent survey. So this is the breakdown of the the students' grades that the the parents of those students filled out. We asked the parents on a scale of 1 to 10, "How strongly do you feel online school has improved since the spring until now?", 10 being that it has improved, one being that it hasn't improved at all. So clearly, we can see that there's a trend that most parents think that this year is much better than last year. I think that that's as a result of the board and administration responding and responding to the needs of the of the the families of BHUSD to the fact that the rigor was not there last semester and that this year we do have that rigor, thankfully. And so students are really learning. And this question specifically reflects the, I guess, the happiness of the families of BHUSD. So we also asked parents, "How many hours their students are spending on the computer each day, including live class and after school?", so morning to night. So we also asked parents, how many hours their students are, uh, spending on the computer each day, including live class and after school. So morning to night. And we can see here that it's pretty significant. So it's about the same as the student about, you know, around fifty percent report nine plus hours on the screen. Uh, it is significant. It's, it can add up and have some long lasting effects. So perhaps, you know, we can come up with some viable solutions to see how we can decrease, say, even, you know, five minutes in each class, ten minutes in each class or, uh, maybe having homework that's not on the computer, some other ways that are creative, but still keep that rigor rigorous education that many of us are enjoying. Uh, the same question was asked to the parents and the results are pretty similar. So sixty percent of parents reported that their students have eye strain and forty percent reported that their students have back pain. Uh, twenty three percent blurred vision, ninety percent dry eyes, forty percent neck and shoulder pain. So a lot of these uh, symptoms are just from sitting down, looking at the screen that has other implications throughout, you know, our, our body. Um, when we asked the parents if they feel as though the current academic schedule makes time for their students to maintain teachers, uh, teacher contact outside of class, you can see it's pretty scattered, much more than the student one. Uh, so one is, is the same being that they don't, they agree that, uh, it doesn't have, uh, as much time as they would like. And we can see that five, at five, we see that thirteen percent think that it does. So it's, uh, it's pretty, it's almost an even graph. It's not as, uh, strict as the one that we saw for the student graph, but it's still, it's still telling. Uh, from the, from your observations, how's your student experience with BHS live so far? So we asked the same question to our parents in this parent survey that was sent out. Uh, so one parent said, better than last year, but a bit more screen time than necessary, interactive and thorough. My son has adjusted well. To the block schedule and is making the best of working from home. Too many hours in front of a screen, ridiculous amount of screen times, not healthy. Uh, the full results again are here in this link. Feel free to look at it. Um, and then for what solution would you suggest to optimize the academic schedule? Um, one parent said, I appreciate the late start. That is perfect. The length of classes is a bit too long block. So for block schedule and then find a way for students to have access to teachers outside of class hours so that, that's addressing the lack of student teacher contact. Uh, less screen time, more project based learning and a day dedicated to office hours, perhaps Wednesday. So that was something that, you know, parents and students were really eager to see happen. I'm not so sure how popular that is now. Um, I know at one point, a lot of, uh, students especially wanted Wednesdays to become office hours. And I know that there's a lot of implications. Well, we don't even know if that's really possible, but I don't think that might not even be the best solution, uh, as of now, but we have, we really just have to work with the board because to be honest, to be frank, uh, I don't know the, the exact solution that would be the best for uh, the students. So I think that just working with admin and working with the board to find a solution would be the best way to proceed. Uh, lastly, your parents said, I appreciate the improvement made. The online learning is so much more interactive now. I think if possible, maybe adding a ten minute break between each class and remove the nutrition period, which is the snack period, I think. Lunch could be shortened to make up for the ten minute breaks between classes. Um, so we have gotten some progress thankfully. So Mr. Mead and admin, they've been responsive to our needs. Uh, they've taken steps to make this online and this, uh, strange experience, uh, the best. And so, you know, as of now, we have many teachers offering, uh, Friday mornings as office hours, but not all teachers. And, uh, understandably, they have a lot of meetings they need to attend, but it, uh, we also need to find a way for students to be able to, uh, get their questions answered from teachers outside of the classroom if they need extra help or if they have, uh, concerns. Um, right now, a lot of teachers as well to address the excess screen time, a lot of teachers have, have been, uh, kind enough to offer five to ten minute breaks. I think it's needed for both students and teachers as well. Um, and many have done it, you know, understandably, because it's, it's, it can be a lot for, especially during block days when classes are about an hour and a half. Um, so there are positive steps being made. I think we're going, uh, you know, slowly but steadily. Uh, but I think there is more that the student body and the parents would like to see done. Um, and just speaking, uh, you know, in terms of the future, uh, so I've been working with admin for, you know, the past, uh, two months since school started. Just addressing the, the concerns that I'm hearing from my peers, my friends, um, people who just text me, call me, people I haven't spoke to much, but just, you know, know that I have some, uh, you know, authority to kind of be their voice and, you know, that is my duty as senior class president to uh, represent my class. So I have been working with admin to come up with solutions. I've been meeting with, you know, Mr. Mead, Mr. Stewart, other administrators and you know, so we agree that it's kind of necessary to get the board's opinion and see what the board has to say and, you know, how, you know, and ask the board to kind of work collaboratively together with all stakeholders, admin, the board, uh, students, uh, or committee in ASB to see what the best solution is for the students. So really, the next thing we, I think we need to figure out is how we can minimize screen time while keeping, keeping our rigor. Uh, you know, the eye strain is the main cause as we saw on the survey of one of the main symptoms and that's as a result of the blue light from the screens. Um, so that's a, a drastic improvement, but we, there's still some lack of student teacher contact. Uh, and I think there are many ways we could fix this. And really, I just wanna work side by side with, with the board, with admin and, uh, student representatives from ASB and the committee to see how we can best, uh, come up with a solution. And if it's not this semester, because I know we're already, you know, two, three months into the semester, into the, uh, semester one of the twenty 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 one school year. I think that we can still prepare for a second semester online as much as we wanna be ready for a second semester to go back to school. I think we need to have both options uh, open because, you know, if we don't go back to school, then we have a new way that we can go about online school, which is, you know, very close to the way we're doing it now, but maybe if we come up with improvements, we can implement that into second semester if it's already too late to implement it for the first semester, which is right now. Um, and if we do back to, if we do go back to school, then great. We don't really have to worry about, uh, you know, improving the online learning because we're gonna be in school. But, uh, realistically speaking, I, I, uh, you know, I, I wanna be ready for a second semester that's online. And I think this is an important issue that uh, I and the committee and the board and administration should work together to address those two, uh, issues, which is lack of student teacher contact and excess screen time. So if anyone has any questions, concerns or wants to collaborate and, you know, find a viable solution, I'll be more than happy to hear from you. Feel free to email me. And, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Newman, for, for being here, for your comprehensive, um, report here. We appreciate it and for taking the time to, to share it with the board. Um, are there any questions or comments from the board members? For Mr. Newman?
Yeah, I'll start. Um, first of all, Mr. Newman, thank you. I think you're now competing with our superintendent on length, uh, PowerPoint presentations. You guys can do it out later on. Um, uh, the, I really love how collaborative you're trying to be with, uh, the admin, the administration. Um, and it seems that there's this strong desire for the students to have that one on one attention with their teachers. So, um, this is the kind of thing I will go out on a limb and say that I don't believe the board should be micromanaging. I think we have heard your concerns and we, for me as a board member, I would hope that we redirect that to our superintendent and, and, uh, Mr. Seaman and to take a look at this situation a little closer and see if there's ways we can improve. I sincerely appreciate the efforts that you and your team and your survey have made into already improving a pro, a problem. What you saw as a problem in a big system, right? I mean, this is the, the, this is the same way things should be handled on a national level. Something is going on, we need to fix it, it gets worked on and repassed and tooled and all that. So I'm proud of you guys for, for taking the initiative. Um, for looking at this and keeping the idea of rigor right at the top of the conversation that we wanna be able to succeed at home learning, but we wanna keep our rigor and reduce these elements that are causing us a little bit of strain. Um, and so I just wanted to thank you guys. Hopefully you can continue to find solutions. We will certainly support the administration in helping that happen. Um, but it shouldn't really, I don't believe it should come completely from the top, our level down, all the way down to the classroom. That we, we, I, I think the way you've been handling it has been successful and it just needs to continue. Conversation needs to continue. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the presenter for a, a very challenging, it's a very challenging report, a very interesting one. And, um, and that, I think that we've all been aware of, of, of the difficulties that are involved here. Uh, you, I think you probably know that the board challenged, uh, staff. Before this school year started, we challenged staff to parallel the, uh, quality of, of the learning program, uh, in the online, uh, method that we're stuck with. Uh, we challenged them to, 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 uh, to parallel what, what would happen in class, in, 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 in the schools. And, um, yes, we realize that, uh, there's a heavy amount of on-screen time, there is, and, um, the other issues that were presented. So I agree with Mr. Margot that, uh, what we should do is ask staff to consider these, uh, issues and, uh, come up, if there is any way of lightening, uh, the load and correcting them, uh, we'd be glad to. But, um, it's, the, it's a, it's a problem. It's, it's a problem. If we, if we want the rigor, you want the rigor, the students want the rigor, we want the rigor. And, uh, the question is, how can we, how, how can these issues be resolved and yet keep the rigor? So, uh, I think you've done an excellent job, very challenging. And, uh, I think we will probably, uh, hear from staff in time. Cause it, uh, responding to you. So thanks a million.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Before I go to Mrs. Walker Schuman, I'm gonna ask Mr. Kishanian, board member, student board member Kishanian, do you have any comments or questions?
Sure. Um, I'd just like to say thank you to Michael, you know, uh, it took time to make those surveys and it took a lot of effort. Uh, I'd like to agree with Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz, you know, I brought it up like a month ago, two months ago, like a month ago at the previous board meetings. And yeah, I mean, there's unfortunate circumstances lead to unfortunate, um, like events, you know, so we can't, there's not much we could do. I mean, there are some minor issues like Michael said that we could take care of, little things. But when considering like big drastic changes, it's not so easy. But yes, but thank you, Michael, and good job.
Thank you, Mr. Kishanian. Uh, Ms. Walker Schuman?
Thank you. So Michael, just, I wanna thank you because we, clearly in your presentation, we could feel and sense your, uh, passion for advocating for what, what you, um, see as necessary change. And I really respect that and I really admire that. So I wanna thank you because it clearly, it clearly took a tremendous amount of time to put all that together and to present it the way that you did. Um, I think there are some really interesting things that you bring up. Um, there are things that we've been concerned about and aware of, um, you know, obviously during this whole process. Um, one of the challenges that, uh, I think we face is that already between last year and this year, our, our instructional minutes are diminished. They're less than we offered last year. Um, so even though we're in a remote environment, I think the development of the schedule was really to try to still hold on to, um, the instructional minutes to make sure that we were delivering on the educational, uh, integrity. Um, but you do present, you know, reasonable challenges. There, there are fatigue. I mean, my, my four kids that are doing online learning all experience the same things that, um, that you noted in your, um, survey and, and the symptoms. Um, I think these are very real challenges. I certainly, I wear the blue light glasses every time I'm on because it's so often, so frequent now. So I definitely encourage families and students to do that. Um, but I think it's a great opportunity, you know, to have the conversation and talk about what else we can do. I'm not, I'm not sure for this semester how much uh, movement we have the ability to make. And, and my concern is protecting the instructional integrity. Um, but certainly, uh, would be, you know, worth having the conversation and, and listening to staff's recommendations. Um, just out of curiosity, what were the times in your opinion as a student that the teachers were available that you would seek them out for assistance before the pandemic?
Um, so before the pandemic, I would really just go to my teachers before school, um, nutrition, lunch, in between classes, after school, I would take really any minute that I could to take advantage of getting that extra help. And that's what, uh, was enabled me to be successful and end the year on a good note because I had those, you know, extra little minutes in between classes and those really made a difference.
Okay. And are those times no longer available? Is it because the schedule has shifted to a, a block schedule? Or, or not available before school anymore?
Uh, it's, I mean, it's definitely possible to try and schedule with teachers, uh, before, after school. And I've had some success doing that and I've had some, and I've, I've not had some success trying to be with teachers and it's, it's understandable. They have a lot going on. Um, but, uh, I think that if we kind of ease the, uh, you know, the complexity of the teacher's schedule, perhaps maybe they'll have more time to meet with us. Um, I know that as time has passed and even since school started this year, they've, uh, had a little bit more time, which is a positive. I think we just need to figure out how we can make them available, uh, you know, on, on a scheduled basis and consistently.
Okay. Well, I again, really appreciate your presentation and all your hard work. Thank you. Um, thank you for putting it all together and bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Is this the same Michael Newman that I remembered from Hawthorne School?
Exactly.
Oh, you've changed so much. I can't, I hardly recognized you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Um, I really think that everything that I needed to be said has already been said, Michael. I, I don't wanna take more time and and reiterate what everybody has said. Um, do you feel, just a couple of questions. And do you feel that if another survey would be done, let's say done at the beginning of the semester, the second semester, well, saying that we have to stay the way we are, and I hope that's not the key. That the students or the teachers have adjusted enough that they would say that there's less screen time now. Are you feeling that? Is it going down? And have you noticed any change as a result of the comments that are made by parents, by students and so on? Have you noticed any change so far?
Um, I think that since school has started, we've definitely seen, uh, improvement just from speaking to people. I know that people, uh, students have felt that they've been able to get more time with teachers. I know it's still definitely a problem though, and, uh, something we can fix. If we, for example, went on to second semester the same way as now, maybe students would feel and, and, you know, since they're more adjusted that it is going a lot better, but I think that we still need to put some, uh, you know, take some steps to ensure that they are gonna get the time with teachers and that they're, and they're gonna have less screen time, uh, for students and teachers alike. And, you know, those differences will, will, we will see in second semester. But if we just go the same way that we're going now into second semester, we probably won't see much difference, but um, you know, people do adjust and it, it may get a little easier. Yeah, I can agree with that.
Well, I just wanna thank you again for the presentation and all the work that you did to put into this and the presentation itself. And I look forward to having more reports from you in the future. So keep up the good work, Michael.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to agree with everything that has been said. Um, once again, I thank you for taking the initiative to put this together and to share with the board. Um, as you know, it's, it's the management that sets the, the bell schedule at the different schools and, and they work, uh, together to, to, uh, come up with, uh, the schedule. And it's not the board's preview, but we do appreciate you, uh, chiming in and, um, you know, as Mel said, I think that staff should take a look at these recommendations found in your survey and see if there's any wiggle room to make improvements. But, you know, we, we are moving forward and it's never ideal. This, this entire pandemic is not ideal on many levels. And so we do need to make some hardcore adjustments to meet the challenges that we, we are confronted with and we're duly, doing our best. And unfortunately, sometimes it's, you know, it's never perfect. Um, and you, you, uh, you obviously have hit on some of those imperfections tonight. So, um, once again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank, uh, admin and the board.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move on, um, with our agenda. We are in the Human Resources and I am going to open public comment. So Human Resources item thirteen A, I'm sorry, eleven A. The public hearing regarding the 2021 reopeners sunshine, sunshine items between Beverly Hills Unified School District and the certificated unit of the Beverly Hills Education Association is now open at seven PM. In compliance with the provisions of Government Code Section three, five, four, seven point five, the Board of Education of Beverly Hills Unified School District will receive public comment input regarding the proposed 2021 reopeners sunshine articles and appendices. Um, so these appendices are Article, uh, three salaries, Article five benefits, Article seven safety, Article twenty-one term of agreement appendix A salary schedules, appendix D school calendar, Article four hours, Article eight parent complaints, and Article number nine professional assessment of certificated personnel appendix B extra pay, assignment forms, appendix F professional assessment forms related to the 2018-21 collective bargaining agreement between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the H E A certificated unit, exclusive represent, representatives covering matters within the scope of representation. The hearing offers interested parties the ability to ask questions or to make comments on this topic. The public was invited to comment on the public hearing by filling out a form located at BHUSD.org public comment by four PM today. There was no public comment received. So the Board of Education has heard the comments and concerns, and we thank you very much for your input. So at this moment, it is now seven oh one PM, the public hearing is now closed at seven oh one PM. Uh, moving on to the next item, again, under Human Resources. The Beverly, the public hearing regarding the 2021 reopeners sunshine items between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the Office Technical and Business Services Unit OTBS of Beverly Hills Education Association is now open at seven oh two PM. In compliance with the provisions of Government Code Section three, five, four, seven point five, the Board of Education of Beverly Hills Unified School District will receive public input regarding the proposed 2021 reopeners sunshine articles and appendices. Related to the 2016-21 collective bargaining agreement between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the H E A Office Technical and Business and Business Services Unit, exclusive representatives covering matters within the scope of representation. The hearing offers interested parties the ability to ask questions or to make comments on this topic. The public was invited to comment on the public hearing by filling out a form located at BHUSD.org public comment by four PM today. The Board of Education has heard your comments and concerns, and we thank you very much for your input. For the record, there was no, um, there was no public comment received. So the public hearing is now closed at seven oh three PM. And moving on to the last item under Human Resources. The public hearing regarding 2021 reopeners sunshine items between Beverly Hills Unified School District and the Instructional Assistance Unit, um, I A S of Beverly Hills Education Association is now open at seven oh three PM. In compliance with the provisions of Government Code Section three, five, four, seven point five, the Board of Education of Beverly Hills Unified School District will receive public input regarding the proposed 2021 reopeners sunshine articles and appendices. Uh, let's see here. Okay, so we have all that section, um, okay. Term appendix, okay, that related to the 2020-15-21 collective bargaining agreement between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and V H E A Instructional Assistance Unit and exclusive representatives covering matters within the scope of representation. Uh, the hearing offers interested parties the ability to ask questions or to make comments on this topic. The public was invited to comment on the public hearing by filling out the form located at BHUSD.org public comment by four PM today. The Board of Education has heard your comments and concerns, and we thank you very much for your input. There was no public comments received, and so the public hiring is now closed at seven oh four PM. Thank you. Moving on. To business and finance. Make a motion to approve resolution 2021, um, sorry, twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one dash zero one seven, adoption of GAN limit. Thank you. And is Wade with us? Wade, did you want to give a brief overview of what we're doing?
Sure. Sure. President Hacker, members of the board. This is an annual resolution approved by the board, which basically exempts us, uh, as a school agency from the limits of the, the GAN limit law. So every school district in the state of California actually does this resolution. And it just, uh, exempts us from the cap of expending state funds.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
I would like to move to approve resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty one dash oh one seven, adoption of the, of the, um, GAN limit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spitz. That'll make it a third because we have, we have a motion already, a first and a second. But thank you for that. Yes, we have a motion. So all the, any further questions? Now, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five zero. And now we're going to go to funding and facilities.
And move approval of amendment number two to the agreement with ARB Inc. for abandonment of oil wells.
I will second. Thank you. Any questions? I see that Mr. Blake has patiently waited for us to get to this, um, item. So, Mr. Blake, did you want to give a brief overview or?
Yes, this is, uh, continuance of the, um, resolution for the cost of, uh, for the capping or the abandonment of Whiskell twenty-three and, um, Elrodale one oh seven oil wells involved in the MTA, uh, resolution for tunneling. And so we have a contract with ARB, who's the contractor, that is essentially a time material contract. And as it develops and as we do the work, uh, we develop the costs. So this is an amendment to, um, get us to where we believe the cost will be for one oh seven. Uh, it, it may be more before we're finished, but this is what essentially when the final cost is an amount that we reported to MTA, uh, before we began the work. So this is part of the full reimbursement from MTA for this scope of work.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Any further questions or comments? Okay, we're going to call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That passes five zero. Um, next item on the agenda.
I'd call a move for amendment to call for the ratification of an agreement with the AAA Network Solutions Incorporated to perform troubleshooting and recabling of existing data drops in the three facilities and maintenance and operations department portables located at Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second. Okay. Uh, any questions, please? Okay. Seeing that there's none, let's call for the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Passes five zero.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of change order number one to Beverly Vista School Island Demo and asphalt work performed by Edgar Garza Construction.
So moved. Okay. So any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Um.
I'll move acceptance as complete Beverly Vista School Island Demo and asphalt work performed by Edgar Garza Construction and authorize a notice of completion and release of retention.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I had, um, I had asked, uh, Dr. Bregy, I thought it might be a kind thing to do for the community that when we do a notice of completion and have finished a project, that perhaps if there's photographs, that we can share that with the community. Um, Dr. Bregy, do you have the ability to do that right now? Or is it up on our site that people could see these, uh, photos of the finished shade structure?
So I do not have those on this computer here. So we, we would have to share it, uh, a different way.
Mr. Margot will load it on the website, the facility's website with a separate heading for the shade structures of B V and the seating.
Okay, great. So we could direct people to the website if they want to see what we're talking about as we finish our projects. Cause I think it's important for everybody to, to get their eyes on it. Since we, you know, people aren't at school right now, at least this is a great way for people to see that there's all these things, wonderful things going on to get ready, um, when our students do come back.
Hey, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That passes five zero.
Move ratification of an agreement with Edgar Garza Construction to install a portable dance floor at Beverly Vista School.
I'll second that. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Marcus.
Okay, um, I noticed that this is a portable dance floor that when I asked a question before about it, it was supposed to be for the auditorium, I believe, or for a place to dance. Um, but they also mentioned a classroom. And, uh, I thought the classroom has a, there, there's a dance studio that has a floor for dancing. Uh, where would the other portable for a classroom be installed? And it's portable, so it obvious means it's going to be moved frequently. Um, so I was wondering about storage of it, number one, and, um, putting it up and taking it down every time it needs to be used.
Um, the, thank you, Ms. Marcus. The, the intention was, and I think we had responded in the Q and As, that it was a request from the site to be able to have the dance department, have the ability to give performances in building B auditorium and not just limited to the teacher's classroom, which would provide the possibility of having seating and having, um, uh, the, the ability to have a performance, um, space. That's the primary purpose.
Right. That, Mr. Blake is exactly right. That's, um, it was more for, um, you know, just the ability to be able to have an audience, um, and, and so be in an area where there's the practice, there's the training, there's the class, but then to be able to have that flexibility, uh, so that it can be moved.
Because I just wanted people to understand that, that.
Any, any further questions for Mr. Blake on this issue? Okay, uh, let's call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes.
I will move for the ratification of an agreement with Secure Tech to install fire alarm equipment at Elrodale School for the relocation of the maintenance and operations department workspace.
I'll second that. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you. Okay, um, moving on, uh, I'll make a motion to, for the ratification of agreement with Garza Construction Incorporated to perform portable enhancements necessary for the relocation of facilities and maintenance and operations department offices located at Beverly Hills High School. Uh, okay. Somebody seconded. I couldn't hear or make that out.
No.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Moving on, I'll make a motion to ratify, uh, for the ratification of professional services, service agreement with Thomas J. Facella to design classroom layout, facility requirements and equipment recommendations for the culinary arts facility at Beverly Hills High School. How exciting is that? Who seconded?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, great. Um, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, so, so I was wondering about the, um, funding source because it notes that this is getting funded out of BH. Um, and it's not the amount, this is a, this is a tiny design fee. But I'm wondering, the scope of work is obviously going to be much larger than the design fee. How, uh, how are we able to pay for this out of BH? I'm just wondering, are we, uh, okay with, with our, you know, the, uh, with the BH police, the BH bond police to make sure we don't get a slap on the wrist for funding a project that will be in building A out of, uh, BH?
Do you want me to take that one way?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Blake.
I think we had a Q and A on that one.
I can jump in and, and Don, please jump in too. I believe this, this project was part of the, the overall modernization plan of, of, of the high school. And as such, it was already incorporated within the budget and planning for measure BH. Don, is that correct?
Yes.
So just to, to follow up with that, so then it, then it doesn't matter that it physically takes place in a separate building than the ones that we're working on?
No, that's, the program requires that the space be appropriately developed, upgraded and made, uh, compliant. Um, and that, that's the purpose.
Okay. Are we gonna, are we gonna have the same issues if we discuss, let's say, if there's room in the, in the, in the, uh, the program to tackle the art room, let's say? I'm just throwing out an example because I don't want to start a flurry, but I just want to understand that. Would that also fall under, um, this?
It could, but I think, um, as you recall in our discussions about this topic, the issue was to bring the space up to compliance, to code and, um, capable of providing a robust program in the space. If we choose the art or we choose the shop or we choose the, um, robotic space, for example, uh, the purpose would be to bring them up to code, or bring them up to a safe level. And this is the opportunity, uh, to do that, particularly while kids aren't there.
Be, because I would just add that not, this is the problem with having institutional knowledge. Not too long in the past, we had upgraded all of the ventilation in that culinary arts room. So I would ask, is that already out of code? Um, is that not what's specifically being addressed? Or there are other issues that supersede that?
There are other issues that superseded that, once the drawings are complete, we look at them and we do the constructibility review of them. Before they go to DSA, we have another exit on the freeway, so to speak, to make a decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That passes five zero.
Uh, uh, Mrs. Hacker, for the approval of an annual cost estimate with the Department of Toxic Substances Control, D T A C for regular oversight activities at Elrodale School, we could probably co-put that one with also the Beverly Hills High School and maybe combine them since they're the same one. The thirteen I and thirteen J.
Okay, um, I'll second. Okay, so we have two, um, any questions on any of those two items? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
I move approval of amendment number three to the lease leaseback agreement for Elrodale Campus Seismic retrofit and modernization project with Pro West Constructors.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Blake, do you want to give us a, a general view of this? What are, this is a pretty big one, right?
Your review on this particular, uh, program are the sub-phases and subscopes that we'll be deploying immediately, uh, for, for the construction process. As each of these have developed, the rea, the reason why they're done in, um, segments has to do with the drawings. We have similar conditions, uh, at Elrodale that we have at B one, B two, B three and B four, in that we discover the reality of the construction scopes after we do the demo and it reveals what is the real scope and what do we really need to do to do the seismic retrofit. So time for the drawings and for scopes, we've been sequencing drawings to be completed, get them to the market, get them bid and get those subcontractors, uh, deployed as soon as possible. Example, the next two G max, and we're going to try to make it one. Example, the next two G max, and we're going to try to make it one, that's our plan. Our plan is to have the final G max to you by March for the entire project. The piece that is taking the longest historical architectural features of the entire project. That scope, while it is quite vast in terms of DSA's involvement, it was never drawn and never included in the original package. So that's our last piece to resolve, and we expect to have that by December fourth. And that package will go to DSA. And we've been putting these projects out to bid before we have the DSA approval, and of course, we do the program for how we identify those contingencies. So there's no gap. If we hadn't done it this way, we would have started, went to DSA, stop, go to DSA, stop, and we've been running, we've been putting this together so that there's no delay waiting for design. So this particular scope for these particular subcontractors are the contractors that will be on board immediately.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions or comments for Mr. Blake? No? Okay, let's call for the question. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of acceptance as complete Pro West PCM, Inc., DBA Pro West Constructors demolition and removal of the MNO and facilities portables at Beverly Hills High School and authorize a notice of completion and release of retention.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any, no, that's it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five zero. Okay, so now we move on to the approval of the new members of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and there was a list. We're Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Proposition thirty-nine is charged with overseeing bond fund expenditures and ensuring they are used for their intended purposes. The district received seven applications to fill the vacancies. The board is asking to approve the following applicants. Elbemo, Bimol, I'm sorry, Don Weiss, Nathan Kruger, and Peristo Elisa Zadeh Benjamin. I think I got that correct. So I have a second, a motion, a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Any discussion?
Yes, I, this is the first time that I've been involved in a vote for CBOC members, but I believe that in the past, they have been interviewed by the entire board, not just two members of the board. So I would simply ask that if we're going to do something different, that we have a chance to have a discussion about it first, because I certainly would like to have actually listened into the interviews for these CBOC members.
So I appreciate that. There is no process in place for this process, Mrs. Walker Schuman, and I did check with council. And Dr. Breggy, actually, the CBOC had this idea that they wanted to pursue a similar process that is in practice with the commissions at the city, where there's two liaisons for every oversee, from the city council overseeing every commission, and they take the chair, the chair of the committee and the vice chair of the commission, I'm sorry, not committee, and they then do interviews, and then they make a recommendation. So your point is well taken, but I did check, and Dr. Breggy had instituted this process in the past with other districts or in his experience as superintendent prior to coming to Beverly Hills Unified, and my understanding when it was proposed was that this would be an inclusive process, because the CBOC wanted to be part of the selection process in the sense that they actually are the ones working with their members. So the process defaults to the superintendent to define that process for us. And so, you know, it's before you, if you, you know, anyone, all the board members can vote for it or not vote for it. If you, and I entirely agree with you that we should probably set a process in place and have it in stone, said in the future, there's a way to follow that. So we can, we can bring that at the next agenda. We can make that an item for discussion at the next board meeting, if you'd like, Mrs. Walker Schuman. I would actually agree with you. So any other further comments?
That was, that was the only question I had. Dr. Breggy, did you want to weigh in on that?
So, yeah, I mean, I can just say that when I was talking to the president, so Rich Baron, the CBOC, we were talking about the interviews for for new members, and so, and I wasn't here the last time. We had a group interested in the CBOC, so we just started to talk about that, and and I had mentioned that this is what I had done in my former districts, and and when I did mention it, people were like, oh, yeah, that's, they did interviews. And so no one specifically said that it was the full board that did them, so it's just authentically, that's how that happened. And so interviews were put into place, because, you know, that's the conversation that we had, and we had no idea that there was a full board that was, that did it in two thousand sixteen, I think it was, and I was not here at that time.
Great. So, thank you.
I did want to say thank you to Rich Baron and to Les Bronte for being part of this process. They were really helpful and took, I think, a significant lead in the process, and I thank all of the candidates who applied. And I'm very, I think that this, these four people are very capable in this capacity, and it was demonstrated in their application and in their interviews. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. That passes five zero. Okay.
I'll make a motion for the approval of resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash zero one six, supporting anti-bias in the Beverly Hills Unified School District.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Margot, and Mrs. Marcus, discussion. And I believe Tristan, I mean, Mrs. Walker Schuman brought this, so I think it would only be appropriate for her to lead the discussion.
Thank you. Sounds nice. So this kind of, this came out of our conversation, I think it was a couple of board meetings ago now, about really AB three thirty-one and the ethnic studies program and the antisemitism. Sorry, not the antisemitism it contained, but in past drafts had contained. So that was really kind of born out of that conversation. We passed a resolution at the last board meeting opposing AB three thirty-one because we didn't have satisfactory guards against antisemitism, but in the course of that discussion, I had, I had proposed a resolution, and actually, Mr. Spitz had followed me with his comments and said he also agreed we should include all forms of racism, not just antisemitism. So I drafted, I actually pulled different resolutions from three different school districts, two in California, one out of state, and cobbled together this resolution, because I feel it's really representative of, representative of our values. I think it's reflective of the strategic plan and the, and the ideas that that contains. And so, you know, Dr. Breggy and the administrative team, the cabinet helped out filling out some of the odds and ends of of the policies that already exist, and looked over it to make sure this didn't create any kind of undue burden for any of the departments. And I feel really good about this. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm happy that it's, that it's here for a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz, I see you, but before I go to you, Mr. Margot, did you have anything to add?
Well, I was gonna actually check if Yoni wants to add anything before I cut him off, but.
Okay, I just saw Mr. Spitz's hand, but.
Yeah, he did. He was a good hand raiser on this one.
Mr. Kishanian, did you have, let's, I didn't see your hand. Did you have anything to say?
No worries. I just wanted to express my support for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz.
Well, I will gladly support a resolution opposing racism and discrimination every day of the week. But they have to be properly written. And this one needs major editing to get my vote. So let me run through it and give you some of my concerns. The third paragraph indicates that BHUSD recognizes that many groups continue to experience discrimination in our schools. I can't personally attest to that. I don't know that. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I don't know about it. And I don't know that it's essential to make that statement, that there is discrimination in our schools. Maybe it can be assumed because discrimination is everywhere, but I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to recognize that there is discrimination in our schools. And I don't think that that statement is necessary in order to to have a resolution of this nature. And then the last paragraph on the first page, this paragraph, the way it reads is that the district supports anti-racism. It supports anti discrimination, and it supports antisemitism. That's the way it reads. I don't support antisemitism, but that's the way this paragraph reads.
Yes, that was, that does need to be edited.
Excuse me, but I wasn't through. That's what it says. Supports education for anti-racism, anti-discrimination, and antisemitism. It really, in order to read right, it would have to be anti-antisemitism to be, to read right, or knock out the anti from racism and anti from the discrimination. We support racism, discrimination, and antisemitism education. But at any rate, there's a problem with the way this is written. Then in the top paragraph of the second page, it refers to sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or gender expression. And I'm just wondering, is each of those a separate issue, or could they be consolidated to gender, sexual orientation? It just seems to me that most of those are identical. Then in the one, two, three, the third and fourth, hold on, one, two, three, third and fourth paragraph, the third one starts resolved. And then it says what the resolve is, that the board directs the superintendent to do something. After that, it says now therefore be it resolved. That's not the way resolutions are supposed to be written. So that portion needs to be rewritten. You don't, you don't resolve something in here and then say now therefore be it resolved. Then let's see. Yeah. This refers to the administrative policy related to dealing with non-local law enforcement, including immigration officials. I'm not familiar with what administration policy the district has in that regard. I'd like to know more about that. And I guess lastly, the top paragraph on the third page, says the superintendent is to take appropriate action. I think the preferred wording is the superintendent shall take. That's, that's just minor syntax, but those are my problems with this resolution, and I'd like to see them cleaned up so that I could vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. This is Marcus.
I was just reading it over again. I agree with Mr. Spitz. There's some language that needs to be cleaned up. There's certain words that could be added to make clarity and some of the things that are said. So I think that before we actually pass this, I think we should hold off and wait until that, those corrections are made. I'm sure that this is going to pass. I'm not worried about it, but I think it should be cleaned up so that it's written the way it should be written, so it looks like it's done by the proper, in the proper way.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So, Mr. Margot, did you want to opine? Did you just raise your hand?
No, I had at the beginning, but that's okay. I wanted to say that since I was the maker of the motion on this one, I would, I'd like to actually withdraw the motion so that they can officially correct the resolution and bring it back.
Yes. So can I just make my comments before we move on that action? I would just say that the board, Mr. Spitz and Mrs. Marcus, anything that you want added. We cannot do this by committee, obviously. So I offer you to please send your, any, any comments or changes to Dr. Breggy, and Dr. Breggy, I would ask that you then incorporate those changes and make sure, should read, it reads well. I don't know if you've passed this by Jabari. I'm sure you have. Or, yeah.
Yes, I mean, yeah, so he was able to review when we were looking at the AB three three one as well. And so, and I did send this out a couple of times for revisions, so I do understand that there's some more that need to be made, but I just, you know, this is something that we've sent out for revisions.
Twice, actually. It was sent out twice for revisions and edited.
Okay, so you know, I'm glad that we're catching these revisions now. I mean, it would have been, you know, we did it, and I think it's great that we're doing it together, so I think that this will, couldn't come back to us. So, Mr. Margot, would you now like to take action and take back your motion, please?
Yeah, no, I would ask to withdraw the motion, so the document could be corrected and resubmitted for approval.
And I'll withdraw the second.
So then, then I'll make, then we have to make a motion to table this. So I'll make a motion to table this item, table resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, zero one six to the October twenty-seventh meeting.
Great, thank you. All those in favor? To, thank you. Five zero. Mr. Spitz, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, great. Thank you. Five zero. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Right? Yes. We're going, yes, I know. So we're gonna go to board comment. Please, Mr. Kishanian? Have any comments?
Yes. Students, we have another milk and cookies event on the twenty-second, where students will be given the chance to decorate cookies in honor of Halloween. Anyone participating can opt in to, to a competition to win a Halloween-themed gift basket. Next, we have our first ever game night event on the twenty-seventh, where students can get together to play Among Us. Lastly, PTSA planned the Operation Gratitude Candy Drive Competition, where each grade is competing for who can bring in the most candy. The winning class will get a prize that is not yet decided. There, there, there will be a drop-off at Beverly Hills High School on the thirtieth, anytime from nine AM to three PM. The event is sponsored by Pavilions on Beverly Drive, who is also offering any BHHS student a volunteer opportunity. There will be a table outside of Pavilions that students can volunteer to sit at, where they will collect candy from members of our community that will also be donated to Operation Gratitude. If anyone is interested. If anyone is interested, you could reach out to me or our ASB advisor, Mr. Hangler, by email and we will give you more details. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Margot.
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciated all the comments during public comment today. We didn't get a chance to discuss those as we don't. But I will opine and say it is nice to see, no matter what side of the discussion you're on, that you're involved with your children's education. I think that is what really builds on a great school district. We won't always agree on everything, but we have to understand that people have the best intentions to support their children and their education, as do our teachers who did a wonderful job. Annie Cohn was very impressive, which reminded me that if anybody has a chance, there's a TikTok of a kindergarten teacher in Washington that is, that you can see this person do this unbelievably. I've never seen anything like it, virtual learning. I recommend, I don't know the person's name, but if you just look up Washington kindergarten teacher, you'll find it. And I encourage people to look at that. We, we are breaking barriers here in our district with how we're delivering this virtual education. That should continue to be an example. I think Dr. Breggy said about the county using our plan as a template. Shouldn't go unnoticed and undiscussed. That's, that is exactly where the district needs to be as we move forward in all areas, whether it's, whether it's how to bring students back, whether it's our education, facilities, whatever it is. We are starting to show the entire community at large, Southern California, that we are a school district to be reckoned with. So I'm really proud of all the work done in that as well. And everybody, continue to stay safe, stay healthy, wear the masks, and let's keep our numbers down so we can get our kids back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. This is, no, it's Mr. Spitz.
Well, I just want to mention a shout out to our staff. These are such difficult times. And I can't imagine a superintendent or an assistant superintendent or principal or assistant principal or even teachers for that matter thinking back to normal times and yet realizing how difficult these, how trying these times are. And I think that our staff is doing really more than incredible job in, in, in in, in addressing the problems at hand. I want to compliment them. Thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman. So October is National Bullying Prevention Month. I'd like to remind everybody, if you see something, say something. October 23rd is Unity Day. I actually want to read a letter that was supposed to be read in public comment, but it was not included. And I think it's really important, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that now. Dear members of the Board of Education, thank you for all of your time and for, that you, that you do for, all that you do for our school community. We are writing out of a deep concern about a fundamental tenet of equality education that is under attack in our district. One of the most basic and cherished elements of a well-grounded public education is critical thinking. Quote, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." That's a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Long gone are the days of memorizing facts. We need to teach our students to think critically, challenge long-held beliefs and arm our students to defend their positions. That includes learning facts that are uncomfortable, as well as giving students the confidence to take minority positions and advocate on their own behalf. In order to teach critical thinking, students should be presented with facts and challenged to examine both sides of an issue. In that way, they can more deeply understand the issues involved and understand that sometimes there is a right and a wrong, and sometimes things can be a matter of perspective. In society and in life, we seldom debate issues where everyone is in agreement. A good teacher presents his and her students with a broad exposure of information. For social studies, the information includes past events and what is happening currently in the world. This is a highly partisan world and that can be controversial. A good educator, however, fosters critical thinking in his or her students and allows the student both the space and confidence to tackle these issues. A teacher should not, however, avoid the issues altogether. By challenging his or her students, the teacher helps the students to develop and grow by helping students see connections and consequences. Life can be hard and students, both now and in the future, will have their assumptions challenged. We need to teach them that human existence is complicated and their views will be challenged. As Albert Einstein said, "Education is not the learning of facts, but training the mind to think." To censor and block information is not good for education. It's not good for our students. Children in today's world are exposed to an overwhelming amount of information. It is an important life skill that they can discern the truth from fiction. It is important that they can form their own opinions and justify them. The teachers are going, are doing an incredible job this fall. Please let them educate our students and not censor certain viewpoints. Allow various viewpoints to be introduced so our students can learn from them and learn to agree with them or defend their existing positions. Above all, protect teachers who are using facts and different perspectives to teach children critical thinking so that they can learn to listen, debate and become leaders and informed citizens. That is signed sincerely Jill, Jill Agarman, Tina and Larry Weiner, Jenna and Adam Frankel, Jeannie Santa Maria and Danielle Lieber. And I'll just close with that.
Okay, I believe that that was the letter in question where we had mixed signals from staff that not to read it. So I did, we, we talked about this and I believe Mrs. Starkins or Ms. Kraschaw, I can't remember which one or maybe both, had suggested that this would not be one to be read into the record.
The authors reached out to me and asked for me to read.
Okay, so I intended to read it, but I, I didn't, you know.
That was a different public comment. I'm so sorry. The one from Mrs. Agarman that we have was not the one that was just read. And it was, it was us that it was not read publicly.
Right. Yes, I was gonna read it, but I, I followed your, your advice because you all said you had received. That was the one that I had asked about, but that's fine. I'm glad I got clarified. I just want Mrs. Agarman and everyone else to know that I intended to read it. So I apologize for the confusion. Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
I just want to talk about the fact that tonight was a very good meeting. I think we got a lot to see as far as the ideas and the comments. I, I thought they were very, very positive, both pro and con as to way when someone may feel. And I think it was important for us to get those out there and then for people to hear them. And I continually would continue to ask people to urge them, if they have opinions or ideas or whatever, to write them and send them in so that we can put them on the board. That would be number one. And I'd like to compliment the Stu report on the ASB. I thought it was an excellent report. I thought he did a very good job. And I don't know what the, we will be reading again before Halloween, but I'm wondering what the city council is going to do about the Halloween trick or treating. I hope that they will ban it. I'm hopeful of that.
They did.
They did. You just heard about it?
I read it, yeah.
Okay, you're, you're watching two screens at one time.
Yes, I did.
Multitasking. So thank you for that information. I'm glad to hear that so that people will hear that there will be no trick or treating in Beverly Hills this year. And I thank the city council for doing that and for the Health and Safety Commission for bringing it to their attention. And I think that's all I have to say. So thank you and have a great week and we'll see you soon.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for putting the agenda together and to the board. I think we covered a lot of business. I did make a little mistake, as I always do. The petition that was sent, you know, the petition will be added as part of the record. And I did want to state that over, I think over 400 or 600, over 600 residents have signed it, that I was asked to say that. So I have to say that since I didn't read it all. But that's, I wanted to say back to Mr., you know, the, the student comments today. I think that, you know, I really thank you all for, you know, putting that survey together and again, bringing it to the attention of the board. These are complicated times and challenging to say the least. But, you know, everyone is really trying to, you know, just really identify, you know, how we can best, you know, what ways, what ways can we best deliver this educational program to our students? And I think there's a tremendous effort on behalf of our teachers every day. And this is not easy to say the least. And, you know, we're so, I'm so grateful for all of the work that, that pours into this district day after day, week after week. And, you know, we have our shortfalls, but we always try to, to get it right. And I really applaud everyone who takes part in that. So thank you for today. I'm grateful and I have a sinus infection, so don't start any rumors. Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Bye.